For our spot. Five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome to the Hampden Town Council meeting, December fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any council who wishes to set aside any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, are there any public comments on the consent agenda or questions? Consent agenda is considered adopted. Public comments, this is the time where the public are allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to make a comment? Public comment closed. No news presentations and awards. Or public hearings, nominations, appointments, and elections, reappointment of Denise Hodgson as registrar of voters. Do I have any public comments on this item? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Denise Hodgson as registrar of voters.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilor Saroy and seconded by Councilor Brand to reappoint Denise Hodgson as registrar of voters. Is there any council discussion?
Denise does a great job, a very professional job, and we've been lucky to have her doing this job, which is a burden and a pain and stressful, but she pulls it off, so I can't think of anyone who could do it better.
Any, anyone else?
I think, go ahead Greg.
I'll just say, I second that.
Yeah, no, I'll third it, and I like her Christmas sweater.
It has been moved by Councilor Saroy, seconded by Councilor Brand, to reappoint Denise Hodgson as registrar of voters. All in favor? Motion carries. Unfinished business, Hampden Business Park renewal of authorization to sell agreement with Epstein Commercial Real Estate Planning and Development Committee recommendation. Councilor Saroy.
Can you come up with a?
Okay. Okay, thank you Dean.
I think that's called passing a buck.
I don't mind at all, though. This is a renewal of our agreement with Epstein Realty and the representation of the Business Park. It's also tied to our development agreement with Sargent Corporation in moving forward in the park. We've done it, this is our third year, this will be the second time we've renewed it after the first approval, if you wish to do so.
Thank you Dean.
Thank you Dean.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion to the council that we renew the authorization to sell agreement with the Epstein Commercial Real Estate for the Hampden Business Park.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilor Shakespeare and seconded by Councilor Saroy to renew the Hampden Business Park authorization to sell with Epstein Commercial Real Estate.
I think, does Tom have a question?
Well, you need to authorize the manager to sign it on behalf of the town.
And authorize the manager to sign.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. New business, potential industrial development, Colebrook Road Route 202, I-95 Triangle. Dean Bennett.
Thank you Mayor. The triangle. Hampden Triangle is a piece of land that is bordered by I-95, Route 202, and the Colebrook Road. It's been the town's plan and vision historically, for the last fifty-four years consistently, in fact. The nineteen sixty comprehensive plan identified this as a potential area for commercial development. The seventy-nine update did the same, the two thousand and one comp plan did the same, and the two thousand and ten comp plan continues that designation and anticipation of a commercial industrial development area. During those fifty-four years, a number of things have transpired. First, we have an ammo park there. The ammo park recently was able to divide and develop into thirty-five lots that are marketable, however they lack the infrastructure. The park itself lacks infrastructure such as sewer and water and those various things. But most recently, the Thorntons, Tom Thornton's family, Peter Thornton specifically, has made investments in that to accommodate a future expansion of those utilities. The Hampden Business and Commerce Park, you know, the front half has been developed, the back half, we recently made a agreement with the Sargent Corporation to, in fact, develop that park, build it out, and expand that infrastructure, sewer and water, up through to the ammo park. And lastly, the H.O. Bouchard, Harold Bouchard and Brian Bouchard both share the vision of a parallel road along ninety-five to open that area up for commercial development that would abut the interstate and the exposure that that would gain in terms of development. We, over fifty-four years, we've made progress in that regard, and tonight, we have an opportunity to fulfill, to fulfill that fifty-four-year-old vision. And with that, I'd like to introduce Greg Launer. Greg is the Executive Director of the Municipal Review Committee, and he has things to share with you.
Thank you Dean. Five A, I have a hand over to Greg. Thank you Dean. Madam Mayor, Town Council members, Town Manager Lassard, citizens of Hampden, good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Greg Launer, I'm the Executive Director with the Municipal Review Committee, and I am pleased to be here this evening to announce the MRC's role in a potential significant economic development opportunity for the town of Hampden. First, let me begin with a bit of context. MRC, Municipal Review Committee, what is MRC? It's a collection of communities that formed an organization back in nineteen ninety-one for the purpose of collectively overseeing the interests of solid waste management for the region. And its primary role through the years has been through its interface with the Penobscot Energy Recovery Company, the waste energy facility that served the needs of our region very well for many, many years. That facility commenced operations in nineteen eighty-eight, and the time horizon for the partnership structure and the municipal contract structure was thirty years. So the PERC partnership and municipal contracts, as we've enjoyed them for many, many years, will come to a conclusion on March thirty-one, twenty eighteen. So the MRC, through its elected nine-member Board of Directors, who are elected by you through communities, and I do want to mention, I have two board members with me here this evening, Karen Fessell, the Finance Director with the City of Brewer, and Tony Smith, Public Works Director with the Town of Mount Desert, and I appreciate their attendance here this evening with me. So back to the PERC-MRC relationship, this worked so well for so many years. We began to plan for the post-two thousand eighteen period as a group of communities several years ago, you know, beginning in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. We worked hard to find a means to extend the current arrangement with PERC, that was our initial preference. However, the economic realities associated with PERC's extension became very clear, in that the facility would no longer serve from an affordability and economy standpoint to our communities. So we recognized that if we're going to continue to enjoy the benefits of maximum recycling and waste processing in this region, we needed to develop a substitute solution to PERC, so our region can continue to enjoy effective recycling processing while minimizing disposal well into the future beyond two thousand eighteen. And so, to do that, we systematically sought out technologies that would provide a good fit for the needs of our region. We initiated a search essentially worldwide, looking for a technology fit most appropriate for us. That search began in early two thousand thirteen and resulted in the receipt of thirteen formal proposals from a number of companies primarily in the United States and Canada, but worldwide, as far away as the Asian Rim, Japan, and a couple of technologies in Europe were evaluated. We settled in the end on a technology company by the name of Fiber Right LLC. They're headquartered in Baltimore, Maryland, and we've been evaluating a demonstration facility that's been operational in Lawrenceville, Virginia, for about five years at this point. They're also close to starting up a commercial-scale facility located in Blairstown, Iowa. In addition, where this technology is still relatively young, we have commissioned the expertise of the Engineering Department at the University of Maine to help peer review this technology, so we can be sure as a region that should we move forward with it, it will be a technology that we can rely on from a performance standpoint and an economic standpoint. So, let's bring the conversation back local, if I may. I have a map here, I think I'm gonna have trouble pointing to it while staying on mic, but the area, I don't know how well, are you able to see the access road, the red? This is, this property, which is primarily zoned industrial, where all the development activity would take place, there's an access road contemplated that intersects with Colebrook Road about two thousand feet southerly of the I-95 interchange points. That road will head easterly roughly.
Or, or you could move the mic, the mic has a long cord Greg.
There, that's very nice.
Thank you. I'm non-technical. But the access road would run from Colebrook, and it would roughly extend one mile easterly across the northerly side of a ninety-acre property that we have optioned recently, in fact, we optioned that December first, so just a couple of weeks ago. So this is all very new. The ninety-acre parcel would be primarily undeveloped. The facility that Fiber Right would construct to handle the recycling and processing of incoming MSW would be roughly ninety thousand square feet, about the size of what I'd call a first-generation Walmart, you know, the first Walmarts that were developed here fifteen, twenty years ago, so about that, about that size. And all the processing would be, would be carried out indoors, there would be no storage of materials outside, any way, shape, or form. And as for the Fiber Right process approach as well, why don't I touch on that? There's a recycling component, and that will be handled primarily with mechanical separation systems up front. And the idea here, I expect we'll get a lot of questions, well, would this form of recycling seek to replace all the hard work that's been implemented through local recycling programs? And the answer, of course, is no. We've done an excellent job at the local level maximizing recycling, but despite all best efforts locally, there still remain a significant quantities of recyclable materials in the waste stream. So the thought process here would be to complement the good work done locally, take a second pass at the recyclables that remain in the waste stream, so we can make significant strides as communities, as a region, and as a state toward the longstanding goal of fifty percent recycling. The next component, part of the Fiber Right process, and there's an excellent video, by the way, perhaps we could, I could work with Dean and we could make sure that there's a link that's known and made available to the public that would have an interest in having this process described through the video better than I possibly could here tonight. Yeah, that, it's an excellent tool. The second major process component with the Fiber Right system, and it's really the key in what made Fiber Right stand out to us in our evaluation as having a principal advantage over the other types of technologies, and that is the Fiber Right approach to the management of organics. Organics is a significant portion of the waste stream, historically has been very difficult to manage, very expensive to manage, very difficult to produce any form of high-value product as a result of processing organics. The Fiber Right approach through a system of segregating the organics through washing and pulping, and then taking the broken-down cellulose, it can then be processed into a high-value liquid fuel, and the processed water that still is very nutrient-rich, that isn't entered into the distillation system for liquid fuels, can be introduced in an anaerobic digestion system as an economic means to, you know, produce biogas, another high-value energy product. And so, that's really the primary feature of the Fiber Right process that caused that to stand out as a good fit for this region. In addition, many technologies that we evaluated came with a very, very high capital cost, which drove the need to attract a significant amount of tonnage, tonnage that would be coming from outside our region. We've always struggled with that issue with the PERC plant, we've always had to import MSW from away in order for the plant to be economically viable. And so what we seek to do with a replacement system is have a project at a scale that can be efficient and economic just with the MSW generated within our existing group of communities. So that was another key selling point to our attraction, to the Fiber Right technology. In terms of benefits, the site itself has benefits to, from a regional perspective, in that its proximity to I-95 is, you know, very convenient and would provide opportunity for placement of a facility while having, you know, minimal traffic issues and disruption and, you know, issues of that nature. And secondly, the location in relation to our overall region is almost exactly in the center of our region, so it's, it's an equitable location from that standpoint. And from the town's perspective, I mean, what, you know, as we evaluated potential sites, the conformity of this projects to the town's infrastructure extension objectives, its economic development objectives, it just clearly, very clearly stood out to us that it was a very close fit with the town's stated objectives that it last set forth in the comprehensive plan, which made it very attractive to us. Now, in terms of financial, fiscal impacts to the community, the Fiber Right, the MRC's role in this project is, we're gonna be the property owner, so we will be the landlord, and we will have rights of project oversight and participation through the landlord-tenant relationship. But Fiber Right will be responsible for constructing the facility itself, which makes the project a fully taxable entity. We're expecting a construction cost of about sixty million dollars, so it's a significant capital investment, and it should lead to, to tax dollars, you know, on the order of at least seven hundred thousand dollars annually, and that will be quite noticeable, you know, even in a sizable community as this one. In addition to the tax benefit, the MRC's role to extend the public infrastructure with the project, I'd mentioned a mile of road, but we're also gonna, I'm starting to, we're gonna extend the water and sewer utilities across that mile of highway as well, electrical, you know, telecom and so forth. So we anticipate that the capital cost associated with extending that infrastructure. Much better. Our cost to extend the public infrastructure, and that would, you know, ultimately, we would seek to have the road constructed to town standard and have that accepted as a public way. And the utilities, of course, would all be public or quasi-public at the end of the day as well, and the total cost of that, we expect to be around a couple of million dollars, so that would be an investment in the community that would stay long-term, probably well beyond the life of any project that we anticipate there. So that's a real plus. And finally, we have an interest in working with the town to develop a host-community arrangement that we would seek to bring additional value to the community, has a great deal of flexibility as to how we'd structure that, 'cause this is different. Host-community agreements, as described in state law, relate to disposal facilities. But in our case here, this is not a disposal facility, it's a recycling and processing facility, there would be no disposal that takes place here in town whatsoever. The residue that's generated would be routinely moved out and trucked away to a distant landfill. So, because of the type of facility this is, we're not bound to the prescriptive outline in state statute for typical host-community benefits. So that will leave us the flexibility to put our minds to work, to look at bringing additional host-community benefit value to the community in a manner that makes most sense from your standpoint. I believe I've covered the main points, so with that, I'd be happy to open up and answer any questions you may have.
All right, first we'll go to the public. Are there any public that have questions? Anyone from the public? Probably, so that other people can hear you. And if you could stay up there too, so that you could answer his question.
Rich Armstrong, one oh nine Kennebec Road. Forgive my appearance, I was just working on my snowmobile, so. Merry Christmas, everybody. Timing is good, it's almost Christmas, this is kinda like a present, so I am very excited about the news, this is amazing. I have some questions that are simple questions that may not have to be answered now, but would like them, you know, at least thought about, some things to think about. I also wear many hats, other than being the president of my company, I'm the president of the Snowmobile Club locally and blah, blah, blah. Currently, it looks like that road is gonna be using the existing road that goes through Bouchard's Fields, right? So that's ITS eighty-two that travels, you know, north to south in the state. I know that Dean existingly, now any development is supposed to make way for existing snowmobile trails, and having worked the last six weekends from noon time till dark clearing the trails, I'd just like that to be thought of as something that is taken into consideration, and I'm sure it will be. The other thing is the timeline, I'll just rattle these questions off and if you wanna answer them. Timeline, love to know what that is. Also, who manages the agreement between the towns and the company who's doing the recycling, and can those towns opt out? So you start with one hundred and eighty-five towns, and then fifty towns opt out, it's not as viable then, just something to, I'm just asking, thinking out loud. Also, what would the traffic increase be, and would there have to be a light added there? It seems like most traffic is gonna take a right, you know, it's going back to the highway, which is not very far, which is terrific. And I think that that's probably all I have besides the Bouchard Fields, would those main, stay there, would they move them? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to answer, answer any of those questions that you can.
I knew we shouldn't have moved that map that close. Quickly, I'll take a quick stab at the ITS trail question. The first time I personally visited the site, I noted to the folks on the site visit with me, I said, "I think this is an ITS trail, and that's something that we're gonna need to be mindful of as we move ahead and make every effort to be accommodating." As for one hundred and eighty-seven in, and what if fifty drop out, and that would be a concern, and again, it reminds me, I should have pointed out before I closed, that for this project to come to fruition, you know, there need to be a few basic things that occur. Number one, we need to finalize a series of agreements with Fiber Right, you know, in a form that municipalities can accept, you know, that work is incomplete. It'll take us probably the most of two thousand and fifteen to bring that set of agreements to completion. Number two, the financing needs to be completed. Equity, and the raising of equity falls on Fiber Right, as their responsibility. I understand they're off to a great start, but we all know the rules of financing, which are, it's closed when it's closed. So, a key element related to successful financing is a level of project participation that the financing community would see as being viable and secure. So to say it plainly, my expectation is we would need a minimum level of participation for a fairly long term, probably fifteen years or so, from, you know, most of the municipalities that currently participate. And if they're, of course, from the municipal perspective- And if they're, of course, from the municipal perspective, yeah, we want to have all sorts of flexibility for opt-out terms and so forth, but the practical realities of attracting finance in a form that can allow the project to move forward, you know, that's the give and take, but I suspect we're going to have to, you know, the strong majority of the municipalities is going to have to make a minimum of a 15-year commitment to this for it to go. And I forgot the third.
Increase in traffic.
Ah, traffic, yep. I could sidestep that and say it's an engineering question. I, I've had some preliminary discussions with engineers, transportation engineers. I don't expect we're going to see a lot of issues arise as a result of that. Additional traffic movement, you know, number of trips a day and that type of thing. Probably looking at less than 100 trips over the course of a day, not at peak hour, I mean, over the course of an entire day. Could there be some mitigation, you know, a turn lane, something of that nature, sure. But I don't expect the level of increased traffic would even rise to the level that would require a new signal or anything of that nature. Again, relatively good fit from a transportation standpoint.
Thank you. The other question was the fields, but I'm sure you don't have any information on that at this time, whether the fields would stay there, the Bouchard Fields.
Yeah, I have no sense on that one.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Just a question on the field. The fields are outside the property that you're buying anyways, aren't they?
They're close by, I'm not exactly sure of.
Well, the fields are connected directly to Colbert Road and run back, what, less than 1,000 feet? That's what I thought.
Is there anyone else from the public who has questions or comments? Public comment closed. Do I have any counselors that have questions or comments? Yes.
Yeah, Greg, if this doesn't come to fruition by 2018, what's going to be the effect on the town of Hampden? The continuation of the Perk Plant, or what does MRC see taking place at that date and from then on?
That's a tough question to answer in a short time, but I'll say that the, there was a proposal offered by Perk's private partners back in 2011, and that year one price was $110 a ton, which is at least twice what we're currently paying and have historically paid. I frankly don't see an economically viable way to run the plan at 110. So if we're unable to secure an alternative solution, you know, the town, along with all the other communities in our region, is going to face a steep rate hike at a waste-energy plant at best, and there's also potential, if we cannot find a way to secure processing and improve recycling in this area, we may be left with no choice but to landfill MSW directly in a landfill under the control of others in a very limited marketplace, which again, I expect would lead to very high pricing for local property taxpayers.
Thank you. Any other counselor questions?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, the reasoning why 2018 is the date is, obviously, I would assume that the, that the Perk Plant has been receiving supplement from the government or something and selling their electricity at reduced rate, or be able to get reduced rates, and now it's going to change? Is that?
Yes, yep. There's a very favorable power purchase agreement that the, that the owners of Perk have enjoyed for the last 27 years, you know, since it started in 1988, and those electrical prices are way, way above market. And clearly, you know, the policy environment here in Maine today, I know, isn't conducive to continuing that type of subsidy beyond 2018. And Perk, having two principal sources of revenue, electrical sales and our tipping fees, it's not too hard to figure out where the money would come from to make that up.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Yeah, I have, I have, I have a comment and a question. And the comment is, a week ago, I was in Boston, and I drove from Boston to 95 on Route One, which is a four-lane highway with not-controlled access, lots and lots of, you know, businesses, restaurants, there's a Walmart, Trader Joe's, shopping malls, and right in the midst of that is a facility that does exactly what this facility does. And it looked to all appearances like a Costco. It was a big green building, except there weren't cars in the parking lot, you know, there were a couple of trucks going in and out, and it wasn't what you think of as a waste disposal facility, you know, so it reinforced what I had heard from you before. And then the question is, I was thinking of this as like zero-sort on steroids, like everything gets reprocessed, but you were saying we would continue to do the current recycling we do, so our cardboard and glass and plastics that we bring to zero-sort would continue to go through zero-sort, not through this? Is that, did I hear that right?
Yeah, you would, our thinking on this is, well, for one, realistically, the material quality that one would expect from a zero-sort system would be a little higher than what, than what we would produce, taking the second pass at the material, you know, that wasn't recycled locally. So we didn't want to implement a system that relied on municipalities discontinuing their existing programs. So we wanted this to be able to supplement existing programs. Certainly, a municipality at some point in the future, if they so chose, to discontinue certain services at the local level and instead rely on the central processing system, that's something that they could look at in the future. So what we wanted to do was implement a system that was more about giving municipalities more options and more choices, but not dictating that our system, for our system to have merit, you had to abandon a certain program or practice at the local level.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Shakespeare.
I've, I've watched two videos of the processing at the facilities, and I take it they're going to be on the town website. I encourage the public to watch those. It's amazing, the technology in the process itself. You would not, like Jean said, you would never even know this was a processing facility. The trucks, trucks drive right into the facility, the door shuts, and then everything is emptied and is quickly processed through conveyor belts and different technologies. There is no smell per se leaving the facility, everything is enclosed, and with this facility, even though it's a large span of property, there will be no landfill involved, just so the public knows, that is not the intent. This facility is, as I understand, been told, been located where it is because it's away from public residential areas. It's a good choice, they're going to put a road in, and it also leads with the possibility and probability of future development along that road for other economic businesses in the town of Hampden. And this is a win-win for the town of Hampden, tax-wise, business-wise, and we are very fortunate if this facility does, does go in and things go the way we hope they do. And it's very promising. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shakespeare. Any other counsel comments or questions? Okay, this requires no action at this time, it was for informational purposes only, so thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you all so much for having, having me in, I appreciate it. And I did want to mention in closing, the MRC is having its annual member meeting tomorrow. That begins at 2:30 in the afternoon, and that's going to be held at the Cross Center, and you certainly are all very welcome to attend. My hope is that perhaps I'll see some of you there, and a big part of tomorrow's program is to discuss, you know, these exciting possibilities with all the MRC member communities, and I hope you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Computer Reserve Use Request Finance Committee recommendation. It was recommended from the Finance Committee that we spend $3,710 out of the Computer Reserve Fund to get iPad Airs for the council members with keyboards. Do I have anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion that we take, from the Reserve Fund, $3,710 to purchase new iPads for use of the council members.
Second?
I'll second that.
Does it move by Counselor Story, second by Counselor Shakespeare, that we use $3,710 from the Computer Reserve Fund to purchase new iPads for the council members? Any counsel discussion? Yes, Counsel Brian.
I was just wondering, what are we going to do with the old units? We have seven computers, laptop computers that were purchased for the council, and I was just wondering what, how, what the disposal's going to be.
Sue, do you have any answer for that?
We have not, we have not, generally speaking, we have, the town has looked first to cannibalizing anything that it has that it needs for other parts. If that isn't, then they have sometimes been offered to school use, but right this minute, there's been no decision on, on what to do with them. Several are not in use at this point anyway, because councils have turned them back in because of their age and limited. Use. But no, there's been no decision at this point on disposition of those machines.
Well, I just wanted to point out that there is, there's a large demand internationally for old laptop systems, XP systems, fully capable, fully functional, and a number of organizations distributed them to third-world countries. And rather than cannibalize them for the minimally useful parts that exist in the older laptops, I think would be a much more responsible thing for the town to attempt to have them, find a, a method of reuse for some relatively nice systems. I mean, I turned mine in, but it wasn't because of lack of, lack of capability, it was because I don't believe in, in working off a laptop at a council session, so.
So can I make a small correction? When you said counselors had turned them in because of their age, I'm one of the older counselors.
No, no. No, not the counselor's age, the machine's age. Got me.
Yes, Counselor Shakespeare?
I am the oldest counselor here, and I have turned mine in twice, but not because of that reason. Yeah, I found the original ones to be cumbersome, like a dinosaur, and not user-friendly, so I turned it in two different times in the last six years. But anyways, I was totally against this initially when I read it, to be on the agenda and spending that kind of money for something that I felt that, jeez, I don't think anybody's even going to use them, like they don't use the computer. But after we had a discussion with the, at least two new counselors coming on board, they were very positive about the fact that they would use it. And thinking about it today, when I was printing up the agenda and looked at all the data on it, I think it was 68 pages, I said, "No, I'm not going to print out 68 pages and waste all that paper." But, so if I had, even talking to some of the other counselors, they're so small and user-friendly, I could just flip through it and come up with a different data I need to look at right here. And so, you know, I, I think it's a good idea, and it's not all that expensive, and as long as the new counselors would use it and some of the old, we'd have to teach David Wright how to use it, but I'd have to learn myself, but it's sort of like an iPhone, I think, so. Anyways, I'm, I'm for it, so.
Any other counsel discussion? As I said in the Finance Committee meeting, I am, I am against this only because I feel that, I mean, these are very expensive machines. For the amount that the counselors would use them, it's a lot of money to spend. We decided to keep our pay this year, and I think that if, I understand the difference between wanting to use something different for your council and something different for your personal, but the majority of what we do as counselors is on email, as far as anything that would be FOIA requested, and that's all on the servers, so I don't see the need for, personally for me, to have a, a second item for the council and for personal, so.
I have a question. You know, we, we gave up the monthly stipend for, you know, internet. Do these imply a monthly service fee for wireless connection or anything like that?
No, they're, they're Wi-Fi, yep.
But I, Madam Mayor, you do use something similar to an iPad, I see there.
It is an iPad, yes.
Yeah, so, so it is user-friendly to you, and you do follow the agenda and everything.
Oh, absolutely. I think that, yeah, I'm not saying that they're a bad thing to use, I'm just saying that I just would prefer not to spend the money at this time.
Sure, certainly, I understand that.
Any other counsel comments?
Yeah, you're looking, as far as the iPad goes, it's about a third of the expense of a laptop, so it's a cheaper route to go, much, it's much easier, user-friendly, so I think it's a win-win.
Yes, Counsel Brian.
Just to comment to people who may not realize, Wi-Fi is not free, you pay to use Wi-Fi. You implied, oh, there's no cost associated with it's Wi-Fi.
Right.
Correct.
No monthly fee to use it.
To the town to use it, other than the fact that if the only reason you're using it and you have no other internet connection and you're not in a location that has broadcast Wi-Fi, which is very common in the town of Hampden, you will have to have your own internet connection and Wi-Fi support, and someone's got to pay for that.
Right.
It's not free.
Right, but the question was, is there a monthly fee associated with, to have, like there is for, I mean, there's some iPads, like your phones.
That use telephone and pay the Wi-Fi service over the telephone lines, but you still need some kind of service.
Correct.
That the counselors will be responsible for.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. VFW Bingo and Games of Chance license renewal? Sue?
Annually, the town council is asked to approve a blanket license for Bingo Engagements of Chance for the VFW for the coming year, which is submitted to, the town submits a letter to the Maine State Police Gaming and Weapons Section notifying them that traditionally that the town has no objection to this occurring. This permission is required, the, the, prior to the beginning of the next year, which would be in a couple of weeks. The, prior to the beginning of the next year, which would be in a couple of weeks. So it's on this agenda. There's a draft letter included that outlines what the town would be telling. It's the same letter that's been sent every year, but the dates changed, notifying them so that the VFW could continue this, which is a way that they make money for their organization.
Thank you, Sue. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve the VFW Bingo and Games of Chance License Renewal.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilor Shakespeare and second by Councilor Soroy to renew the VFW Bingo and Games of Chance License. Any councillor comments? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Kiwanis Poker Tournament License Renewal. Sue?
Again, like the VFW, the Kiwanis Club on an annual basis asks the town for approval of a certain number of dates during the year during which they hold poker tournaments. And there are 21 designated dates for the year 2015. This, it's one of their three major fundraisers for the Kiwanis on an annual basis. But again, it's sent into the Department of Public Safety of the Maine State Police by the Kiwanis, but it requires the permission and signature of the town in order to do so.
Thank you, Sue. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the Kiwanis Poker Tournament License Renewal.
Is, sorry, it has been moved by Councilor Shakespeare and second by Councilor Ryder that we approve the Kiwanis Poker Tournament License Renewal. Any comments from the council? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next item, Holiday Hours, Town Office and Transfer Station. Sue?
First, I'm going to circulate the Kiwanis for signature. It's right on the back. If you start there and get it back to Denise, that would be great. Thank you. This is on the agenda because Christmas Eve, which is Wednesday of the 24th, the town's hours are 7:30 to 6:00, and I'm asking if there's any objection if I do not keep the town office open until 6 o'clock on Christmas Eve. Most businesses or banks, et cetera, are closed earlier than that. I'm open to suggestions from the council, but would hope that 5:00 is not the answer. I'm the...
What would Santa say?
Santa would say noon.
Santa would say noon. I'd say 3:00, 3:00 o'clock. I don't know.
I don't imagine that there's very many people coming in after noon on Christmas Eve.
What's been a past practice on something like this? Past practice?
Noon.
Noon?
Oh, it has been.
I think noon would be a great Christmas gift. Don't you, Denise?
I think it's a lovely gift.
There you go. There you go, see?
Any comments from the public? Public comment closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I'd make a motion that the town office close on the 24th, Wednesday, at noon. And the transfer station.
Second?
Second.
It has been moved by Councilor McPike and second by Councilor Soroy that the town office and transfer station close at noon on December 24th, Christmas Eve. Council discussion?
The only thing is, so the transfer station's only going to be open for two hours then, that day, actually.
All those in favor?
It's the day after that's...
It's the busy day, all the wrapping paper and things to throw away.
Do we have further discussion? No?
Yeah, I guess the discussions come up to, what about the next week on New Year's? We're looking at holiday hours.
Do we close early New Year's Eve normally?
Has been past practice to close early on New Year's, and is that something you want brought forward to discuss?
Yes, it's generally been closed earlier than 6:00, and yes, now's the only time to discuss it. There's no other meeting before. That the, I can't remember if last year we closed at 2:00 or 3:00. It was 3:00 last year.
I think it was 3:00, but it's also...
It's also year end for us, so we're here after, for an hour or so, at least after close, to do year end, so.
Yeah, if we closed at 2:00, it would be 3:00 before we were out of here.
So you have business to do because it's the end of the year, right, yeah. So although you're closing for the public, you're still...
Here.
Yeah, here, yeah. So I make a motion that the office...
I'd like to amend my motion and add on to that, that we close at 2:00 on New Year's.
For the public.
Eve, right, the last day of the year, and also the transfer station? I guess they're included.
Does the transfer station usually close early on New Year's Eve?
They could do the same thing you did last year.
Same thing, okay.
Second.
It just closes and...
So the motion is for the town office and transfer station to close at noon on December 24th and at 2:00 on December 31st. Any council discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Town Manager's Annual Report.
Okay, I'm not going to read this 10-page thing that I wrote, but I hope that all of you did. The format that I presented this year's report, which is a requirement of my contract, is I inserted into it the minutes of the 2014 Goals and Objectives Session. And after each item that was identified for discussion, I identified what, if any, action the town had taken relative to that item. And that consumed the first lots of the first pages. And there were, one, two, the first six and a half pages, and the last, almost four, was additional work done that supported the council's policies that had been adopted. What I didn't do was itemize by department all of the statistics that those departments generate, because on a monthly basis, you get a copy of the report of each department, which, for example, for the library or the pool, or talks about numbers of participants and programs and all of those kind of things. And when we do the budget this coming year, those statistics for the past year will be consolidated as part of the budget presentation to understand workload by department as well. But the purpose of this report is to talk about the accomplishments of the town, the council, and the policies that the council adopted or worked with or thought to be important over the year. And I would note that the town of Hamden accomplished many things this past year. And I would note that very, a very large number of those were positive items. Those things don't make the press the way that the negative things do. But if you take the time to read through what the town has accomplished and the track it's on to continue accomplishing, I think it would be eye-opening in some respects in terms of the level of commitment that this council has had in a pretty unanimous fashion to economic development as a way of improving the community in ways that, to help mitigate mill rate impact on residential property owners. And the commitment of the council to look at its regulations and work to make those more consistent with state statutes and less onerous for those trying to do business or residential development in Hamden. Not so that Hamden doesn't retain its character, but so that some of the impediments that may once have made sense, but perhaps now make less sense, can be changed. The the town has looked at and will continue to look at how it does business. Not because I do not believe we don't do a good job doing business, because I believe that we do. But I think it is imperative that we continue to look every year at how we do what we do to make sure that we are doing it as effectively and efficiently as we can. I think it's fair to say that there's no new money tree growing in Hamden, and there's unlikely to be one. But there will be, and there are, and there continue to be, a great deal of pressure on the community to fund all of the things that are important to it. And not everyone even agrees what all those things are. But some of them are education, some, if not all, municipal services. And then there are those things that we're incumbent to pay whether we agree with them or not, like county taxes and a third of the water budget and all sorts of those kind of things. But this past year, while it has had some challenges, as I said, has, the town has put in place some things, and particularly in the economic development realm, that should stand the town in good stead moving forward. And I want to thank the staff that works for the town, who, nearly to a person, are outstanding employees and whose goals are to provide excellent services to the members of the community. I want to thank the community itself, who does an amazing, amazing job of meeting its obligations to keeping the roads good and the schools funded and the police and the fire and all of those by paying their taxes in a, we have a very high collection percentage. People here pay attention to those obligations and, in doing so, make it possible to keep the mill rate as minimal as it needs to be to fund those obligations. And I want to thank the council, who is collectively my employer. December 11th was my 14th anniversary as the manager in Hamden. And I'm honored to have this position, and I, believe it or not, have people who ask me sometimes why I would ever want to do this, because it's not viewed as either easier fun on a routine basis. But I can tell you that Hamden is a great community. It's, as great people live here, great people who work for it. And as I said, I would really encourage you to read this report. And the last 13 of these are on the website, I think, or as far back as 2007, anyway, when we started putting everything on the website. There's one of these every year. And if you go back and do what I did, is I reread one from the next to keep moving forward, and there's progress. And there are many things that the town has accomplished over time that the council collectively should be proud of, you know. Have we had our moments? Absolutely. But I think it's fair to say that overwhelmingly the council has made decisions that they believe to be in the best interest of the residents of the community at the time. And I am happy to answer any questions about any of them, but as I said, please read it. It is is accurate. The great thing about being a data-driven individual is that if anyone wants to know or get the information, I'm happy to show you. So, anyway, that is, that's, it's here. I'm happy to answer questions. Anyone who has other questions afterwards, I'm in my office 90% of the time.
Yes, you have a question? Yes, please.
Alex King, 75 Ichabod Lane. One question on Skiing Center is, do we have an option after the five years or four now?
Absolutely.
For a dollar still, or?
That continues, that first five years allows the continuation of that. The five years is the first part of the country.
I'd like to encourage the council next year to really look at going forward what the plans are for Hamden Rec. You've got a potential of losing the ball fields on Cobrick Road two or three years. And I think the town really needs to have that debate on where they want to go forward with this in the coming years. But something that doesn't happen overnight, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Public comment closed for this. Any councillor questions for Sue?
I just want to make a comment that one of the reasons things are so civil, so rational, and so data-driven is you, Sue. You make the effort to make sure that everybody has all of the information and understands what's going on and to set the stage for good decisions. And I also think that we have wonderful town employees. And I've appreciated the chance to get to know so many of them during the past six years. So give yourself some credit. I mean, I want to give you some credit, so, really.
Thank you, councillor Law. Councillor Soroy?
Yeah, I'd just like to simply just thank Sue and the team for the job that they do every day. You know, can't say enough. You really don't learn to appreciate it. You hear things on the outside. Until you sit in the council chambers and become a councillor, understand what Sue and the town employees do day in and day out and how important they are. So, thank you, Sue.
Thank you. Yes, Councillor Shakespeare?
Yes, I haven't read all of what you wrote in depth, Sue, but I did read quite a bit of it. I also appreciate the reports, I think it's every three months, that the staff produces on their departments.
Every month, yes.
Is it every month? Okay, I take it back. Every month. I do read those, and I find they're very interesting and quite intensive at times as far as what they're reporting. But the great job that the staff does working for you and, of course, you working for the town council. And I want to thank you for that.
Next item on the agenda, committee reports. Services Committee, I believe you were gone, so councillor Shakespeare?
What's?
Services Committee, report.
I must say...
Councillor Brian?
Yeah, basically, we discussed the parks and recreation areas and what we're going to do going forth on that. We're still looking for volunteers to, citizen volunteers, to be involved with the committee. And if any of them out there are interested, please come forth because we need help. Ideas on what you want to do and how you want to do anything with our three major parks, Dorothy Dix, Turtle Head, and Paper Mill Park. Had to think for a second, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Infrastructure, Council Rider?
We haven't had an infrastructure meeting recently. Our next one will be Monday night, so at this point in time, anything I tell you would be old news. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and Development, Council Saroy.
Yeah, the only item that we had was the Epstein commercial contract, a realty contract that we discussed and I drew a total blank on. And I thank Dean for picking that up. And then we went into executive session and had a conversation around the solid waste proposed fiberite facility here in Hamden. Everything that was discussed tonight was discussed during that meeting. I will tell you that all of us in that meeting were really impressed with the facility and the opportunity that this presents to the town. You're looking at a facility that basically a truck will drive in with trash and drive out with any byproducts. There's no smokestacks, no dumping, no landfill. Whatever comes in goes out and goes away. And, you know, and the alternative is, not only for this community, but other communities in Maine, you know, we're looking at a host benefit of close, over $900,000, taking this facility on. The alternative is, if, you know, we don't help with this issue or this problem in the future, we could see an increase of $200,000, $400,000 a year in just, as it pertains to trying to get rid of our own waste. So, the benefit, I think, definitely outweighs any possible problems, but I really don't see, you look at this, you look at the tapes, you do some reading on it, it's a great technology and it really lends to being better stewards of not only the town of Hamden, but of this beautiful state, and I think it's a great opportunity for us.
Thank you. And Finance Committee, the only thing that we had on the agenda was the iPads for the town council, which we discussed tonight. We now have presentations for the outgoing councillors, the three councillors that will not be back. First one is Councilor Jean Lawless. Town Council, 2009 to 2014. Councilor Lawless has served as a town councillor for the town of Hamden since she first ran as a write-in candidate for District Three council seat, beginning in January 2009. Jean has been a strong advocate for recycling programs, parks, trails, and responsible economic development. She has chaired the council services committee and has also served on planning and development committee and the finance and administration committee. She has championed the cause of public bus service, supported upgrading ambulance service to the paramedic level, and always had the courage of her convictions in presenting her beliefs and council deliberations. She has been a reasonable and measured voice in a sometimes difficult situation. Jean has rarely missed meetings, whether council or committee, during her six-year tenure, and has gone above and beyond the meeting requirements to attend site visits and park visits, to meet with constituents, and to spend time researching information before making council decisions. All of this is in addition to her full-time work as a teacher and her volunteer work on behalf of the Eastern Agency on Aging. Thank you, Jean, for your service. We hope that you will continue to volunteer to help with the town, to work its ways through the park policy development process and to support the economic development projects that are on the horizon for the community. Thank you, Jean.
So, do I get to say just a few words?
You do.
It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the town of Hamden. And I've gotten far more out of these six years than I put in, in terms of getting to really know the community, many of the people in it, the people who work for the town. I more fully live in this town than I've ever lived in any town in a very profound way. It's become my hometown, and it would not be the same had I not had this opportunity, right, to serve on the council for six years. So, thank you for the opportunity and for the privilege. And I have this sense of optimism about how the council is going to function going forward. You know, I look at the discussions we just had about this new business opportunity and the unanimity and the civility. Maybe it's going to be, you know, a more pleasant experience for everybody going forward. I really hope so. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Shakespeare?
I have to say a couple of words, because I did not know Jean before being on the council and...
And you've been stuck next to me for all this time.
Yeah, for almost six years, I've been sitting next to her. And she isn't just a fellow councillor to me, she's a great friend and a great friend to the town of Hamden and committing herself for the past six years. Just want public to know, it takes a lot of commitment to be on this council for six years and do the committee meetings, council meetings, other communications that we have to go through. And personally, I want to thank Jean and from the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Shakespeare. Next one is Ivan McPike, Town Councillor, 2013-2014. Ivan McPike was elected and began service in 2013 to fill the unexpired term for the District One councillor, former mayor Janet Hughes. Elected at a time when the council was facing dramatically reduced revenues from revenue sharing and large increases in the local school budget, Ivan became the council's advocate at the school budget meetings for consideration of mill rate impact from the school budget. Ivan is a show-me-not-tell-me kind of individual, and he spent a good deal of time learning about the town's challenges with stormwater licensing, evaluating ordinances for needed changes, suggesting ways to better evaluate municipal department operations, and advocating for economic, sorry, economic development that could help to defray the property tax impact on residential property owners. He had the time and the interest to learn about the programs and pressures that the community must deal with on an all-the-time basis and was willing to spend as much time as it took to make progress. Thank you, Ivan, for your service. As you know, we rely heavily on and always need volunteers. We hope that you continue to help the town as it works toward increasing economic development, a measured approach to stormwater management, and more.
I would like to say something. Ivan, you taught me what it really means to get down in the weeds, and I have a lot of admiration and respect for you.
Ivan, I'm glad they gave you a nice purple bag. And I just want to say, you know, when you came on board, you had the same, I'm going to say, I don't know, conception that Councilor Saroy was alluding to, the fact that things were different and that maybe things weren't being worked on and worked out the way you thought. And after coming on board, you realized that, how hard the staff works and what it takes, and you've made a fantastic and great contribution to the future economic development here of the Triangle. And honestly, I kind of hope maybe you'll run for council again at large the next time, because you're a great asset to the town council. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Well, just one quick thing to say, Ivan. Even though you were one of the six people that voted to fund our financial responsibilities this year, you were not alone, as some people insinuated in increasing the taxes at town of Hamden. Took six people out of seven to do what was necessary.
Dr. Thomas Brand, Town Councillor, 2001 to 2014. Tom's most current service to the town of Hamden is the 14-year period on the council from 2001 through 2014. However, he was, he also has served on prior town councils as well as on the town's planning board. Councilor Brand was elected in March of 2001 in a special election, the first election run by the brand-new, at the time, town clerk Denise Hodston, to replace the candidate who had been elected in November of 2000 but was unable to serve due to a change in work schedule. Tom has provided much-needed institutional knowledge for town councils over the years on a wide range of subjects, ranging from the now-closed Pine Tree Landfill to a public referendum on the idea of closing the transfer station and going to curbside collection. His attendance record has been exceptional at both council and most council committee meetings over the years. He is a tireless advocate for excellent municipal services, responsible economic development, adherence to policies, regulations, and what he sees as the town responsibilities, the town's responsibilities to its residents. Whether you agree or disagree with Tom, you rarely have to wonder what he is thinking. His advocacy for or against policy items is vocal and itemized. He has served through the turbulent times of landfill chaos, then calm, then closure, persevered in the effort for economic development projects from the old high school to the development of the business park, the ammo park, Amera, and Route 202, Colebrook Road, I-95 corridor, to name a few. Thank you, Tom, for your efforts on behalf of the town of Hamden.
If I may, Tom, you want to say a couple of words first?
Well, just in the course of over 20 years since I first started with the planning board, I've said too much already.
I think we heard a lot of it in the past. Yes, Tom is very outspoken, but believe me, if anybody knows what's going on in the town of Hamden with the rules and regulations and the council, you can ask Tom Brand, he'll tell you exactly, almost verbatim, what something says. When I came on board, Tom and I were kind of at odds to each other. He thought like a lot of other people that I was such a bad guy. But we've grown to actually be great friends, stopping to have coffee together and chit-chat about personal stuff and sometimes town stuff, honestly. But Tom, you've done a fantastic job for the town of Hamden, not just on the council, but on the planning board in the past. And again, I want to thank you, and I think the town council and the town of Hamden want to thank you for your dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
The thing I think that the town is losing with Tom's retirement is a sense of history and how these decisions got made over time and what the rationale was that went into them, you know, on the part of previous councils. We have a kind of institutional amnesia, because people don't serve, you know, for 20 years. And that's a big loss. So, I think we'll be poorer for your absence.
Yes?
Yeah, I'd like to just to say something to all three, to Jean, to Tom, and to Ivan. You know, there was a lot that went on. We agreed, we disagreed in principle on a number of things, but at the end of the day, we all agreed to do whatever it took to put our differences aside to move this town forward. And, you know, I want to thank Jean, Tom, and Ivan for everything that they did. I just wish that Jean and Ivan had an opportunity to have a fight for this election, fair and square. Unfortunately, it didn't occur, whether it was robocalls or mailings. But at the end of the day, it is what it is. I know that people remaining on this council, again, will try to do everything we can to move this town forward like it should and not take any steps back. So, again, Jean, Tom, and Ivan, thank you.
And now it's time for councillor comments. Oh, manager's report, sorry, Sue, I didn't mean to forget.
That's okay. Every year for the past, well, 13 of the past 14, because I'd only been here two weeks the first year, I've written a poem about the town. And I'm not a poet, but I've done it every single year. And I did it again this year.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I take a break?
Anyway, so, my manager's report tonight, as it always is, the second council meeting of December, the poem. "Christmas 2014." "It was the night before Christmas and all through the town, many creatures were stirring, they were driving snowplows. No rest for these gents as they cleared all the snow, so the rest of us could get where we wanted to go. The crew is sad now to lose Chip this year, but with Greg back for a time, they have nothing to fear. On those same roads, the police made their rounds, checking to make sure nothing bad happened in our town. Radar guns were put away, no seatbelt checks in sight, just wanting to make sure that all were safe throughout the night. The fire department was busy enough, making plans for a grant with which to buy stuff. This crew is so good at getting grants for the town, it makes even Joe get rid of his frown. It's the best place in Hamden to find a good book, or a movie, or program, or a recipe to cook. Of course, it's the library, it's down off 1A. Make plans really soon to go spend a day. The Skiing Center, to the town, it is new, as a place for all ages to find something to do. Shelley and Jill are busy, working all day round. Basketball, football, hockey, even roller derby comes to town. Julie and Darcy spend their days teaching kids to swim and helping adults, both young and old, to stay more fit and trim. The most popular place in Hamden costs a $10 ticket to get to the spot. Located just off Canaan Road, the transfer station's hot. So far this year, they have done their very best to keep up with development and pass many tests. With 56 homes permitted this year, Miles and Jason are busy, of that have no fear. Dean and Bob have kept busy throughout the entire year, staffing planning and development two nights a month or more. One brings them in for development, one helps them through the maze of local regulations that could leave you in a daze. Planning, assessing, development, Public Works, Code, Ambulance Two are all assisted by Rosemary, who never worries about finding work to do. Assessing is not a popular job when tax bills are sent out the door. People call Kelly, wanting them lowered, they want to pay less, not pay more. A new GISIT staffer, Kyle, hit the ground running from his very first day. It started off with a bang, no power, no internet, we are lucky he did not run away. The front office crew is second to none, their work is efficient and they do it with fun. They do it with grace and professional ease, they do it despite those who whine. Tammy, Cheryl, Amy, Danielle, and Denise, as a staff, they always will shine. Exception-free audits, meticulous records and such are all due to their efforts, and I appreciate it all very much. It is important to remember, at the end of the day, we are a team here in Hamden, and with your help, we'll stay that way. Because of the efforts of all who work here, and because of the residents too, there is no better place to live, work, or play. there is no better place to live, work, or play than Hamden, Maine. It is true. For 14 years, I have had the honor of managing this wonderful town. While there have been challenges, maybe many at times, it doesn't get me down. And it's because of the people who work here and because of the residents, too, that I never forget why I love this so much. Thank you all for the chance to serve you." Sue, it was our December.
And I can't believe I almost forgot to let you read that. Councilor Comments. We will start with Councilor Shakespeare.
Now we know what Sue does in her spare time.
I thought Dr. Sue's illustration.
Okay, just a couple of comments. Actually, I have five, but I'll make it quick. Already on the Bangor Daily, we have a article about our solid waste disposal presentation this evening, very nice one, by Dawn. Second one is whenever I have a computer problem, I have to call Kansas. My son is watching right now, and he texted me and said, "Dad, I'll help you with the iPad. No problem." Thank you. Well, the third one was, Sue, we're going to have to work on counselor assignments for this next council, as far as what the new councilors want for committees.
Those forms will be distributed to all councilors prior to the first meeting to bring to that first meeting so that whoever's elected mayor can use them to consider assignments, or the council can, at that time, choose. I think there's two options. One is mayor, the mayor makes the assignments, and the second is the council can choose to ballot.
Right. But it'd be nice if the new...
But they will, like we always do, receive the questionnaires prior to...
Right. But it'd be nice if the new mayor, whoever it is, will be able to review what the councilors would like, what committees they'd like to be on. Also, I want to thank Public Works, as Sue did, for working over the Thanksgiving and making sure our roads were clear and safe. And last but not least, wish everyone in the town a Merry Christmas. And question was, like Sue says, why do I do this? People ask me why I serve on the council, and I thoroughly enjoy serving the public. And as long as I feel I can make a contribution, I hope to keep doing it and hope the public will support me. And Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you.
There was a story in today's Bangor Daily News about a local business, and I think it's a wonderful story. The Dennis family has been in the area for 100 and some odd years. It started with the grandfather and his brothers and horse-drawn carts carrying bottled beverages throughout the area. And it's grown and now has a major operation in Hamden, which we helped in the development of several years ago. And now the Dennis family has made a decision to continue the business, making it an employee-owned business, which is, you know, a really interesting move. I'm sure it's good from a business point of view, and it's good for protecting the heritage of a company that I know the family is very proud of. And it's good for Hamden. It's just a feel-good, you know, thing for the business to do. And I was really happy to read that story.
Councilor Brand?
Well, just one comment I guess I'd like to make is that in all the 20-odd years or so that I've been kicking around, I've always been just one of seven. And one of seven can do nothing all by themselves. It requires the rest of the council to back them up. And we have a staff at the town that is second to none. And the staff is really, are really the ones that make things happen in Hamden. And don't ever forget that.
Thank you. Councilor Ryder?
Well, I just want to thank everybody for all the support this year. We've all been through a lot, and we've accomplished a lot. And we did it as a group. No matter what anybody said, we did it as a team, and I appreciate it.
Councilor McPike?
Yeah, just a couple of things, not to drag it on too long, but there are a number of things that I got more deeply involved with than I thought I would in this. And I would have liked to have the opportunity to carry on and find out more about 303D wastewater. But, and maybe I will. But I'm hoping that the next council will can take consideration on education of the public. And I thought that was probably one of the things that maybe we highlighted the best here, was to find out where the tax dollars are needed and what drives that. I hate to see the council get down into which pothole are you going to fill next. And took those dollars. I hope that someone from the council will start attending the school budget. We'll look at that. We'll watch those people over there. We'll continue to film that. That's a huge, huge, huge tax burden on us. And I think the more that we can educate the public on our education system, the better off that we're going to be. And I hope that the council goes forward and continues to keep the town strong and vibrant. We've got a lot of good things coming on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Saroy?
Yeah, I just would, again, like to wish the fellow councilors Merry Christmas, town employees, and the residents of Hamden. Just one thing I'd like, Sue, I can't leave without. As it seems we're moving forward, as it pertains to technology, the audiovisual, is there any discussion about...
Yes.
Yes, never mind. Thank you.
That will be on the agenda for Monday Night Services Committee. I mean, Infrastructure Committee, wrong committee.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, and I would like to thank you, everyone, for your hard work over the past year. Despite all the chaos, we did manage to get a lot done. For those of you not returning, I wish you the best in your future endeavors, and thank you for all your contributions you made to the citizens of Hamden. I made a commitment at the beginning of the year that I would not resign, and I'm proud to be able to finish out my term and turn over the reins. As I said at the, I don't know, few months ago, I will be supporting Council Ryder because that is what I promised him I would do for the mayor. And I can promise you one thing, Council Ryder, should you be elected mayor, I'll have your back. I will not allow you to be disrespected by other councilors, and I wish that people would have done the same for me in this past year. I don't hold grudges, and I have no ill will. Regardless of what people think, we are politicians. But I do have a very thick skin. I realize that some people aren't happy unless they're tearing others down. And sometimes I get upset with my husband because he prays for people that mistreat me, but he reminds me that that's the proper thing to do. We must treat others the way that we would like to be treated. The taxpayers have spoken in this past election that they're tired of taxes being raised. And whether or not we can prevent it, we will work very hard to reduce Hamden's tax burden this year. And I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I think it's going to be an exciting 2015. I think that, I would hope that the incoming council, that we can all work together and to get things done. And I have some ideas that I would like to bring forth. Some of them are very aggressive ideas, but I look forward to debating them in a fully respectful manner. And I think it's going to be a lot of fun. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Meeting adjourned.